All right, welcome everyone. Can I have a motion to, wait. I don't want the regular business meeting.
I do the regular business meeting and then go to.
Sorry, okay. All right, welcome to the October 11th regular business meeting. Can I have a motion to call the regular business meeting to order? So moved Mike. Second Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Now can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person? So moved Linda. Second Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will be back momentarily. All right. Welcome everyone. I need a motion to move out of exec session and into the public meeting, please. So moved Mike. Second Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'm not going to forget this time. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as written. Jen, so moved second. Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got that one. All right, we're going to move on to our liaison reports. Do we have our students here?
Oh, yeah, they are. Hi.
Oh, yes, okay, we're all here this time.
Oh, thank you. I got yours, thank you.
Good evening. This past week was full of excitement as it was Schrader's homecoming week. We are very appreciative of all the faculty and staff members for helping us have a fun and safe time.
Before we begin, I'd just like to introduce myself since I wasn't here last time. My name is Audrey Kena. A couple of things about me, I'm the student council president and I am the captain of the varsity tennis team.
The marching band along with nine other schools competed on Saturday at the Schrader Stadium for the autumn fanfare. The night was full of exhilaration as the band put on a fantastic show. The hard work and dedication of the marching band is amazing and we could not be more proud. We would like to thank all of the students, directors, and parents for organizing such a great community event.
Moving on to the fourth grade fun run, which was quite the spectacle at North Ponds Park this year. Over 700 fourth graders were present to run one mile with many teacher and parent spectators. Varsity athletes including myself from Schrader and Thomas came to volunteer there as well, helping them finish the race by running with them or directing them back to their teachers. Another successful homecoming week has passed at Schrader thanks to all the hardworking students and teachers involved. The week was kicked off with class color day and karaoke in the cafeteria with Mr. Eckler. Tuesday was Adam Sandler Day along with free popcorn in the cafeteria. Hallway decorating night was also on Tuesday and the freshmen won with an amazing disco theme. Wednesday was themed day to match the wonderfully decorated halls. There were free snow cones served in the cafeteria and there was an after-school bonfire. Thursday was Blue and Gold Day along with a pep rally and homecoming dance. The pep rally was spectacular with performances from the cheerleading team, the dance team, and Georgie Provosty singing the National Anthem. The seniors won the pep rally and everyone was happy to be back for our first indoor celebration since COVID.
The bonfire took place on Wednesday, October 5th from 8:00 to 9:00 PM in the junior parking lot. This was the second annual Schrader homecoming bonfire and there was a huge turnout. Kona Ice provided free snow cones to the first 200 people present. The homecoming dance took place on Thursday, October 6th from 7:30 to 9:30 PM in the Schrader cafeteria. The student council chose a casino night theme where they decorated the vast space with poker chips, playing cards, balloons, and lights. The dance was a great success as students enjoyed dancing with friends and socializing. A huge thank you to Mrs. Jockeman, Mr. Peck, and the student council for organizing the dance and thank you to Mr. Eckler for DJing.
Our fall sports have been doing incredibly well as usual this month. The varsity football team remains undefeated after the homecoming game on Friday night. The boys varsity volleyball team were champions of the Penfield Tournament and the girls volleyball team has only lost one game this season so far. Our swim team has Claire Gordon seeded first in the 100-meter freestyle race for all of New York State and our field hockey team won their senior night game against East Ridge. The girls soccer team recently celebrated their coach's 300th career win after defeating Penfield. This past weekend, the tennis team competed in team and individual sectionals at Hilton and are going to finish their season in a match against Penfield this week. Thank you so much for your time.
Your, um, by the way, the pep rally was fantastic. What a great homecoming week and I'm excited about Thomas's homecoming week coming up too. Pep rally, you guys, did you, I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly, you had a tug of war.
Yes.
Between the students and the staff. And I know there's a couple of staff that are behind you there that might have been, I can't remember who won that.
The seniors, the seniors pummeled the teachers.
Thanks, girls.
No problem.
Well, it was so funny. Nice job, girls.
Thank you.
That is quite funny. Good evening, everyone, and happy fall. The school year has started off great with many different activities happening throughout the school year so far. On September 30th, we watched Webster come together to celebrate more than just a football game. Crosstown rivals faced head-to-head at Thomas where we had food, truck vendors, and a packed stadium. In honor of so many families being impacted by cancer, one Webster made this more than just a game, with up to 20% of proceeds going to the Wilmaugh Cancer Center at Strong Memorial Hospital. Our student section, T-Birds, did a great job advertising the game as Thomas students showed up wearing neon to support our team. We appreciate everyone who came out on that Friday to raise money to support cancer research. Our newer service-based program at Thomas, Titan Service Scholars, held a car wash in the Bill Gray's parking lot to fundraise for our international service trip to the Dominican Republic this July. They made, we made roughly $900 in support and have many more events planned to raise money for the trip. Last week during lunch blocks, an activity fair was held in the cafeteria to encourage students to get involved with extracurricular activities. A few of the clubs included Science Olympia, Model UN, Webster Varsity Radio Club, Art Club, and many more. Last Wednesday, we hosted a guest speaker, Max Dossel, who talked about how mobile devices and social media are designed to addict users. The Counseling Center also hosted a college fair for the Rochester area colleges and universities and the Media Center. Presenters from these visiting colleges mentioned how this was the best, this was the best attended conference they had all year. Throughout the rest of the school year, students are encouraged to check Novian's accounts to sign up for various college visits with representatives.
This week is one of our most popular weeks of the school year, Spirit Week. Titans are busy this week with many events and activities to show their Titan spirit. Each day this week is a themed dress-up day. Today was Country Club versus Country Western, tomorrow Surfer versus Biker. Thursday is Throwback Day where the seniors are ancient Greece, juniors are 70s, sophomores will look to the future, and freshmen are 60s. Lastly, Friday is Class Color Day where each class proudly wears their class color. Seniors are red, juniors are blue, sophomores are purple, and freshmen are pink. We'll show off our class spirit at our pep rally on Friday at the Thomas Stadium. Throughout the week, students can gain points by participating in activities for their class to win the Spirit Stick for 2022. It's a race to the top. Our annual Can Jam fundraiser will support the Community Food Cupboard of Rochester this year, where depending on which grade level you're in, you'll place donated items in your own bins to help your class win. The grade with the tallest and thickest tower wins will win points towards the Spirit Stick. Our annual homecoming dance will be held on Friday night, the 14th, in the Thomas Courtyard. The dance starts at 7:30 and ends at 9:30 PM. Tickets are $7, which includes pizzas, snacks, and beverages. This Saturday, the 15th, the football team will play against Spencer Court at home for a homecoming game. The theme is blackout, so come to, so make sure to come and support our team. At halftime, the 2022 Spirits Week winner will be announced and they'll be awarded with the Spirit Stick. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was great. Good luck on Friday.
Hi Joan.
Always looking to make sure I have the right card. Never know, okay, good evening to all of you. These guys do such a great job, sometimes I'm left with, okay, don't have to report that. And it is, it's just so wonderful and I'm so glad they started off with Schrader, Thomas. There's so many emotion that goes into it, but the community that they have built and what has happened to form this amazing research for cancer. They brought it together to do something that hits home. So they brought so many things together and as we sit here right now, they're delivering all the clothing orders that were ordered that evening. So more money was being raised and thousands will go to cancer research thanks to all the kids in Webster and a lot of adults. Behind the scenes, clubs, intramurals, they are in full bloom. It is so nice this year that the modifications we've needed to do are now let down. We, people are volunteering, they are spending time after school, they are taking late bus hosts home, and more and more students and more and more WTA members are able to have those in-person meetings and then learn from what we did with Google Meet and Zooms and have that combination where people can do some things. So that has opened some opportunities to students and to staff, which is wonderful. Learning, socializing, engaging, our German teacher, Christine Bruckner, has this German, her coffee, I am going to so say this incorrectly and I'm so sorry. Cafe and Kuchen. They are German coffee and da, uh, she has like pastries that the kids are doing and they are getting together voluntarily and having these talks and coffee breaks and it's been wonderful and they're using those socialization skills and those talking in German to help with their bilinguism. Their seal of bilinguism, I'll talk to you in the spring, I bet all of them will get it. As we speak about role models and helping our students learn that they can't be part of all the different clubs because there's literally hundreds in Webster between the elementary, middle, and high school. Teachers teaching teachers, wow. Bring it on home, bring it back, it's in together. There were over 80 Webster educator-led sessions. So we had John Burns come and make us all laugh and giggle and cry and then we had these sessions that everybody could break off to do. The hard part was narrowing it down to two. And the beauty was having that value to go back to your home building and have some time with your own little part of your family from Webster. Our WTA, Craig Johnville had big shoes to fill and boy did he ever. We had over 50 boxes of food donated and, and delivered. Not only collected, but it's delivered and just when he thought it was done, a whole truck, not truckload, a whole crate showed up. This year marks the 20th year that NICET is also supporting Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. This Sunday is the Walk, many of our WTA members will be there on different teams and supporting our own team. Our PTSA, that connection is so strong. Our coat and concert drive is now underway and on the end of this year, the end of this month, October 29th, we will have some clubs and students joining us to help with the distribution and helping people get the things they need to have a successful year. EDI, Candace Lucas, she has been amazing working with Dr. C, some of our teachers on special assignment. They are involved in an Educating for Equity. It's launching of the first year and it will be a full year of people across the district working on differences, effectively engaging colleagues, students, families, the broader community, and everyone. It will be. WTA Strong, I think of, we always meeting our students where we're at and now we have this chunk, nobody has to tell you guys, you're the board. We have this chunk of people who thought they retired, but they're back. They're filling in for people on maternity leave, they're filling in for vacancies we unexpected, and it's neat, they are back. We have all over 100 new members. So we have these retirees, we have these new members, and we also have members in the middle who are learning how to be reps and help with the union and help with our organization continuum. From elementary to middle to high school, WTA is working incredibly hard. We wish you all peace, health, and joy.
Thank you Joan.
Yeah.
Campus news.
Come on up.
Come on up.
All right, I'll get us started here. And actually, I'm just going to piggyback a little bit and expand on what Sydney actually shared about this weekend and what a beautiful weekend it was to welcome 10 bands to our One Webster Community for the Webster Marching Band's 36th Presentation of Autumn Fanfare. This premier field show featured performances from 10 different marching bands from across the region, including Webster's own award-winning marching band, The Pride of Webster. And I hope that many of you had the opportunity to stop out to see, to the Webster Schrader Stadium to experience these amazing performances. And thank you to all of the student musicians and performers and all of our staff and all of the parent volunteers who spend endless hours rehearsing their shows for all of us to enjoy. And I know that they'll be coming up with their state competition at the end of this month as well. So, and now continuing on to our campus news, it's exciting to introduce to all of you again Mrs. Laura Blue from Clem North, our principal there, and Mr. Paul Benz, our principal at Schrader High School. I'll let you two take it away.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you dad.
I don't think I want to know.
Yeah, I'll let you know Janice.
Okay.
Brian was visiting our building once recently and one of the students said, Mrs. Blue, is that your dad?
I did hear that, that's awesome.
It was a highlight of my year so far. Thank you so much for welcoming us. We're excited to be here tonight to boast a little bit about what's going on in elementary and secondary. I'm going to get us started. I just have some pictures, they're all bragging pictures of what's happening in the schools and our elementary schools because we're so proud of what's happening. My theme tonight is belonging and some of these pictures up here just shows our, our kids, our students, happy at work. You can see some first graders making the letter, can you guess? Um, yep, good. And, um, and then we have some third graders out on the playground just enjoying a beautiful day. This last picture is really, really cool. One day I was down in one of the kindergarten classrooms doing a project with some kindergarteners and I got a call on the walkie saying, Mrs. Blue, can you come to our front entrance? And we had a surprise visit from the Heritage Christian Center in Webster, the Webster location and these friends up here had collected school supplies and wanted to donate them to a school and so they chose Clem North and came to donate. You can see that they all have different supplies in their hands or, um, with them that they're sharing with us. So we came out to greet them and we're potentially going to start a little bit of a partnership with them to do more because they want to get more involved in our school. It was a really special time for us to have them visit. So Paul, you can continue on. My theme tonight is belonging to let you know what we're doing in our elementary schools to help foster this idea of belonging that we're so passionate about. We started the year, Brian did a great job in our opening day ceremony talking about this theme of belonging and we've just really continued it through an elementary school. You can see that Amari's showing what she looked like on her first day of school, she drew a picture. We're, we're proud of who we are and what we look like and all that is, makes us unique. Oh, go back, sorry, I have a lot to say. There's Nate and he's celebrating his birthday, we like to celebrate birthdays at our schools. And, and then finally, this is a picture, we were so fortunate to have Brian and Aaron and some of the members of the board able to come to join us at Clem North to see a little bit about belonging and what we're doing around this, this theme in person, which was great. So Carol, there you are, the star of the slideshow. And one thing that we do in our classrooms is we like to greet each other in morning meetings and we turn, we, we do greetings in all different ways, sometimes using different languages or different motions. But it's really important that we pronounce each other's names correctly and that's something that we are working on as well as eye contact. Making eye contact and teaching our kids that when you're welcoming someone in to the circle that you're, you're doing that. So you can see that Carol's doing that with a friend in second grade, which is great. That's part of our morning meeting, which is across all the schools and the elementary level. All right, so belonging is not just for our students, but it's for our staff. You can see the Clem North staff on our bus getting ready to go to our opening day ceremony at Kodak Theater. At Clem North, Mrs. Welsh and I like to go into our pocketbooks and buy our staff shirts every year. Those are actually last year's shirts because they hadn't gotten this year's shirts yet. Ooh, Mr. Hamill has this year's shirt on in the second row. Be you, be here, belong, it's a Brene Brown quote and it says Clem North Pride. So that was what this year's shirt looked like. But it's really important that we try to foster this sake or this sense, this theme of belonging, not only with our students. You can see Mrs. Wagner's class gathered together for a morning meeting, but also with our staff and with our families. So something that we're doing, it's not really new this year at Clem North, but it's, there's a slight variation and change as we do Changemaker Mondays on our morning show that's completely student-run. We have students present about somebody in their culture that has made a difference. And so every Monday, we have somebody new and from a new culture. And this year, we really wanted to get families involved with this initiative. So we're opening it up to families and families can adopt a Monday and, you know, celebrate someone in their culture to teach us about on the morning show. So that's really exciting. Go ahead and switch. We, we like to celebrate our authentic selves. We've done a lot as a full school and this year, we're really at Clem North specifically looking at how we can reach students in smaller groups. So the first picture that you see on the left-hand side is a picture of our Ukrainian Culture Club at work that we meets weekly at Clem North and we have some other clubs like this starting up at schools. This is a club that happens during the school day, so it's not after school where kids have to get rides to or from. This happens at school during that morning meeting time. It's a great way, I heard somebody talk about this at the secondary level that you're doing, that they're doing this with the German club. But it's a, it's an opportunity for children to be able to speak their native language, their first language with each other and just make those connections. So that's wonderful. Maria that you see there, the blonde, she made me this wonderful pin as part of the club and it's, it's just been a really great way for connection, having people be their authentic self. We also have care coaches that are checking in on individual students every morning and afternoon as just a way to welcome them to the school day and then to make sure that they're going home in the evening, celebrating their day, their great days. We have a lot of student leadership opportunities, so you see our, our board members and Brian and Aaron who visited our morning show and you see another fifth grade student that's collecting attendance, which is important. We thrive in our community, thank God for Jim, he's been excellent. He's one of our favorites at Clem North. If you don't know Jim Gudarian, you probably do. He's fantastic, but he's part of our Clem North family even though he doesn't work there full-time. So he always has Clem North shirts that he gets to wear when he comes and visits. But it's, it's really important that everyone that walks into our school buildings at the elementary level that they feel that second sense of connection, that sense of belonging, they have a welcoming, greeting, smiling face from the adults. Students have that from the adults, but adults have it from the students as well. It's, it's twofold and from all the people that visit our school as well, all visitors that come. Community circles, a lot of our schools are getting involved. We've, as administrators, we've been trained or are getting trained through PERI if we haven't already, been through some different steps of community circles and then restorative circles and that's been a really powerful training. So we have taught, you know, our staff a little bit about that and that's something that is continuing to grow in our elementary schools, having circles and being able to connect very similar to morning meeting, but having opportunities for smaller circles to happen as well with students. There's not really a good picture that highlights that up here, but there are circles that are happening across our district where kids are connecting with kids, adults are connecting with adults, and, and then there's mixes of that as well. So our visitors that came, they got to be a part of a circle that we had, which was fun and that was a mixture of adults and students together. So thank you for participating in that. And then, um, I tend to be long-winded, so I'll say thank you. Here's some languages up here, we, we definitely are celebrating everyone for being their unique selves and we want people not to feel like they have to fit into our culture, but we want them to feel like they're just part of our community, they can be their full authentic self and that's what we're celebrating and really being purposeful and intentional about that this school year at the elementary level. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gracias.
Yes.
All right, I want to shout out to Paul Conley for dealing with my craziness on these slides. You'll see the last one, so thank you Paul for helping me with this. Our themes for, we have two themes tonight, together and spirited. Together in that the four secondary schools and the, and the programs are working towards have, providing a similar experience to all of our students as they go through Webster schools. So we start with Spry and a lot of these themes you'll see throughout, which means what I was just saying about togetherness and all, same time spirited. So Spry also did a, they did a home caring week for homecoming week last week. So they kind of mirrored ours a little bit. But they also, before that, they did some Spry Family Night with PTSA food trucks. They had an apple day. I think it meant the fruit. And then we all had the Max Dossel Social Media Experience along with the parent presentation at all four buildings, which is about hour-long in each building. And also they, they're in full swing also with their sports, intramurals, and clubs along with the hot dog day, grilling for staff and students with all four secondary buildings have been working towards and doing in the fall and in the spring. And therapy dogs are thriving in all four buildings. And there is a process for that, as you know, to make sure that they get certified each and every year. We asked, willing to kind of just talk about a little bit about the Max Dossel Social Digital experience and this is one big part of it and how eight seconds of kind in-person interaction can make all the difference in the world and that is research-based, so not just Max's wish. But look, if you look at that middle picture there, and that was another theme that came out of that and is for students to really think about, and he hit upon this a couple of times, beginning and at the end especially, but which apps games make me feel good afterwards and which may game or apps make me feel bad afterwards? And he talked about, you know, the concept of either being good at a, at a game or really enjoying the game. And there's a difference between the two, you know, they, they like playing a game, but are they good at it or whatever? But what is it that they're feeling during that time? So it's not that they love the game, it's just that they just can't put the game down after the first hour. He used hour when he was talking about a 17-hour time with it. But that was his example. But that was, again, that was at all four, all four buildings together in different locations. This is our goal, um, community. They actually did a really cool trip to the Seneca Park Zoo where they teamed up with Rochester Regional and their Alzheimer's and dementia unit. And our students worked with those patients and walked them around. One cool instance was, there was one patient who spoke more Spanish and so we put a couple of students, Mrs. Safe I should say, put a couple of students who are more fluent in Spanish with that person and they were, they just had a great time taking care of them throughout the day. There's also some terremucio that was being made in the culinary arts, studio art class for ninth grade along with, on the far-left picture there, the, all of them are the zoo base except for the far-left picture and the, the, um, the cooking there. But the far-left is them at the homecoming game. So they also participated in Schrader's Homecoming Spirit Week activities, dance, and pep rally. So they're very included into all that. Again, there's that, that together piece. At Thomas, um, they are, again, working in sync with Thomas, their homecoming week. I'm sure their spirits will be very, very high, especially with today's weather and hopefully have the great weather for their outdoor pep rally on Friday. And again, they talked about their charity earlier and there's their view of the Max Dossel and the gym and also the college representatives. Same thing at Schrader, they, they do a little tour. They were at Schrader last week, we also did our activity fair during the, during the day. Where students, again, our goal is 100% engagement from students, whether it's a, a club, activity, sport, or musical instrument or voice. With that, again, we're all tied in together and this was the crazy one that I really need to thank Paul because I just threw a bunch together because homecoming week is crazy. And I thought, this is my artistic license to just say, just throw it all on there, I can't take note of any of them. So, um, but it is and it's, it's so well worth it and it's, it's amazing. And I am so proud of our students and how they worked, not only their spirit, but their behavior and their, and their, their participation was through the roof along with staff. The funniest day that I've ever, I think may have participated was the Adam Sandler Day. It was the first time we've done it and it was like, well, Adam Sandler Day, what do you mean? You know, so basically you can do big baggy shorts, big baggy shirt and so of course I joined in and it was, I can see why Adam Sandler wears baggy shorts and shirts, it's very relaxing.
Where's that picture?
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Somehow I didn't make the slide, Paul must have cut it out, I don't know. But it was a lot of fun. A couple of, oh good, Paul found that pic, oh no, we put that picture up there too. Couple of ones that aren't from homecoming are the ones on the left. We have a Thomas and Schrader football. We have a Thomas and Schrader football together at Monroe County Urban Suburban Open House. And as Cheryl Cox Poole likes to say, we won Spirit Week for that activity because our students go there and they just help introduce and support anybody across urban suburban in Monroe County. And that was at East Rochester. They took time on their day to go and participate. I know from us, it was our four captains. I don't know exactly from Thomas's who attended. I did want to throw in there's a bathroom picture. Again, it was after hours and all that stuff, but we're, they're getting done, but we are having signs, we're having signs put on.
I'm glad you explained that, by the way.
And so the lower-left corner, but we're trying, again, just there's that positive feel in the culture building in the school and you can see the different activities in there. And this is what the homecoming is really about and I don't know if it's them of, hopefully it'll. And they actually won a decimal challenge. It was a 120?
121.
121. And being at the Bills game the other day, they only got the 98, we only got the 98 at the Bills. But 121 in the gymnasium, they, the students loved it in the gym, probably because of that, but they are all shouting. They just, they just want to get it out and they have the best time.
This mic isn't working.
Oh. Paul Conley, I think Laura's.
Laura's trying to talk. We try to teach children at the elementary level with their voice level to be quiet and then Mr. Ben screws that up, completely dismantles it at the secondary level.
He said it's a level 10, a level 10. So anyway, they, I don't know, we just, just a lot of smiles, a lot of happy, a lot of happy kids. And I think that's the underlying feature to all this is that we want them to come to school and be engaged and look forward to activities like Spirit Week and anything that we do. And I'll tell you what, this senior class has brought their A-game to every single activity that we've done. So they're really a pleasure to work with and they're showing the road for the next few years.
Paul, does that include the tug-of-war?
Again, no pictures.
Pummel could be a good word, yes.
That was the word when the girls got home, yes, was pummel.
Usually we do much better than that, I don't know what happened. So, but thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you both.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
We had such an enjoyable visit at both of them.
Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you, Paul. And next up, something new, a new addition this year to campus news. And I'm thankful for the three gentlemen sitting over there and I'll introduce them in just a second. But one of the things that we're going to add to campus news is we'll have an elementary rep, a secondary rep, and also an operational rep as well. And the first operational rep is going to be our Supervisor of District Safety, Security and Emergency Planning, Mr. Neil Flood, and also our two school resource officers, Mr. Officer Dave Hurley and Officer Kevin Ambrosetti. Please come up and join us and thank you for being the first ones.
Careful. Hand the jab. Hand the jab.
So Brian asked us to come and talk about the SROs and I really thought the best way to do that would be to let them speak for themselves. But before we even have Dave and Kevin talk, we have a video that Mr. Conley was kind enough to put together and I think he actually did a great job on this. And this kind of captures the, what the SROs really bring to the district, in my opinion.
As school resource officer, I think the main thing has been a resource for the town, the police department, and most importantly, for the school district, the community. Found myself a lot inside classrooms, meeting with students, assisting students with problems that not only inside schools, but also some of the things that arise outside of schools.
You're a police officer first, so we maintain security, but you know, what else do we do? We're like mentors to kids, we're law-related educators. We go into classes, we speak to kids about all sorts of different topics. So I really do enjoy that and it's refreshing at the end of the week.
It definitely adds an element of safety, obviously. And then I feel like it adds an element of knowledge because you're learning so much from what they're telling you.
We get to build these relationships with the kids so they get to see us as police officers, but then when they start to meet us and they realize that we're people, we're parents, we're other community members here in school, so they can, they no longer see the uniform, they see us as people.
And I think, yeah, being able to see us in school and then knowing that, yeah, at 3:45, we go and take off our uniform and then we're just like the rest of you, we think the way you do too, you know what I mean? I think it's very crucial.
It's been nice with the addition of the second SRO is being able to plan more events, scheduled in classrooms, doing presentations in so many different classes, not just law and justice and forensics, but in English classes, in physics classes, in elementary classes, reading with kids, having them see cops in a different light.
They add a lot because they come to my other classes too. Like I took personal and business law last year and they came to both of us, told us their own stories. In health class, we learned about like if you get pulled over, what you should do, what you shouldn't do. And they just are generally just available to go around. Like it's so easy to talk to them, you can just walk up right there and just talk to them if you had a problem.
They do offer, they're like, you, you can sit in or like, you know, so if that's a career path you're interested in, they totally like, you know, allow you to look at it.
Yeah, I actually looked at the police academy and I talked to them about paths to go there. I'm headed for criminal justice and I'm in security now. I feel a lot more confident in what I want to do in the future.
It's nice to know that we have good like cops here in Webster, you know, they are really good people and so you see them, you build those relationships. Like I didn't really even know who Officer Hurley was, like I saw him around the building. But as I got older, I started seeing him more around the school and he's a really nice guy. Can't say enough nice things about him. Then I saw Officer Ambrosetti here at the end of last year and, you know, right away, he just was really nice and opening and so nothing but good things to say. You never know what difference you're going to have. I think educators have that same thing when they realize like, you never know how you've touched that person's life till years later.
That's awesome.
So.
That's really good. Good job.
I know Dave and Kevin may want to say a few things. I would just say to anyone out there, if you think that this isn't a good expenditure of your tax dollars, you just don't understand the value the SROs bring. It's worth every penny, in my opinion. Dave, Kevin?
I just, I really thank Paul for making that video. I didn't know what the kids were going to say, they just, Crystal Girls and Paul asked for some volunteers and we had no idea what the kids were going to say about us. So seeing this is just so humbling and it's, you know, it's embarrassing, it's touching, it's been awesome. Really is.
I think the part that is always so amazing is at the end of the year, graduation, when you're standing there and how many students, how many students you've impacted because they go right up to you and hug you. And that speaks volumes about the relationship building that you're doing. So we thank you for that.
I appreciate that as well. I mean, it's, it's hard to judge like if you're doing a good job in our role. I don't think one of our measurements is how many arrests that we made or how many tickets we wrote. It's, you know, how do we measure the impact that we made on people's lives? And you know, same with educators, you know, we can judge ourselves by test scores and things like that. But I think at the end of the day, it really is, you know, the impact that we have on these kids' lives. And it's, I really appreciate having this role in the schools where you're dealing with kids before emergencies happen, either as a suspect or victim. So I appreciate that they get to, honestly, once they kind of break down, you know, overwhelmed by our uniform, they really see us as people, so it's been a lot of fun.
And I'd also say that they're always looking to do more. Both of them just came to me a couple of weeks ago and they want to start a club after school, like a law enforcement club. We've got to work some logistics out with Glenn and Paul and talk about the whens and hows, but it's another opportunity for students to maybe glean some additional knowledge. And, you know, that was their idea, not ours, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just safety in school is so important right now and it's really a heightened topic on everybody's mind. And I know that we've done so much to ensure that the children are taken care of. So not only are you doing that, but you're also doing all the rest of this, which is building relationships and helping students with all sorts of conflicts that they have, whether they're in school or out of school. And I'm sure it helps also if you are out of school and you run into those kids in either official capacity or not, it helps to have those relationships there too and they're going to listen and trust what you have to say. Because they don't listen to us anymore, they don't listen to their parents. And so it helps having somebody else there, you know, who they trust and they believe everything that's coming out of your mouth. So I really appreciate that and I really appreciate all the efforts that you guys have made for the security aspect too. I definitely think it's well worth having you guys here. I don't know anyone that would disagree with that safety of our kids is number one and four right now.
Thank you. It's, it is funny to see some of the kids that actually do recognize you outside because both, you know, faculty and staff and students, sometimes they just get used to seeing you in uniform and then when you're not, they're like, wait, who is that? So it's kind of nice that when they actually recognize you outside of a uniform, it's been kind of fun.
Actually, a picture of you on Facebook the other day with their daughter with an elementary school, just talking about what a great presence you are and what a positive relationship it is. And so it's so great to see our community, our community celebrates it too.
The fourth grade Fun Run was kind of fun.
Yeah.
I didn't run the whole lap though, I can tell you that.
No, because you rerun the ending lap about a hundred times.
I was strictly trying to motivate some of the kids towards the end, so, no. I didn't think I'd want to run the entire loop.
The beginning and the end are what it would be.
I almost did last year. I pretty much ran the whole thing last year because I did so many of those short loops, but yeah. I mean, we had beautiful weather this year, so it was really nice. And there were so many parent volunteers, so many people. That's the other thing that's been really helpful with the Safe School Helpline and just people starting to be aware of their surroundings. Like people were like, hey, who is this person? Come to find out, it was just another parent there. But it's nice that people are seeing things and saying things. And we get that through not only tips at the Fun Run, but through the Safe School Helpline that allows us to work in school and also with Neil having access to the police department 24 hours, using the guys on the road in case there's emergencies outside of school, which happen unfortunately too many times.
Yeah, it's an excellent partnership.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know there's a kindergarten teacher who is always welcome to have you come and agree.
I'll be reading in her class shortly.
Before you guys stand up, I do want to recognize that all three of you, I don't think people enough know the resource that you are. I mean, I know we call you resource officers, but also including Neil, all three of you, what you provide for us. Because when an emergency happens, one of the most important things is timeliness. And the timeliness and the reaction that we always get from the three of you and any other connections that we might need in town or in the county, it's first-rate and it's something that we're very fortunate for. And I know that you guys might lose sleep a lot of nights, but it helps us sleep better knowing that the three of you guys are in the position you're in. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, and I will wrap up campus news with another incredibly important group. So I want to thank the group of people that are on the screen there, myself, not including myself, but our Board of Education, who I have said many times are true, true, true champions of education. And from October 17th through October 21st next week, New York State will be recognizing and formally recognizing our school board members for School Board Appreciation Week and for all that you do for our students during this week, but beyond. We all know that the seven of you spend countless volunteer hours throughout the year, dedicated to the needs of our 8,000 students, their families, and our incredible staff members. We are thankful for all that you do and we want to recognize you this evening and every day we celebrate you and the work that you do and we're so grateful. So I know I speak on behalf of all of us here tonight and certainly on behalf of our staff, that we're grateful for you guys being in the roles that you're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that everybody else feels this way too. Just a quick thank you to Janice and Linda because when it comes to time spent as president and vice president, it's even, and it's 10 times more. They take on so much more so that other people don't have to take it on and I really appreciate all the time you guys spend, so thank you.
Thank you.
I echo the same. You're right. So thanks. And that ends my report this evening. Next up, we get the social studies report.
Good evening and thank you to the school board for the opportunity to share a little bit about what we've been doing in social studies, I think since the last time. It's been a few years since we talked and obviously we won't be able to get into everything, but just want to do a high-level overview of some of the recent changes and updates that you might want to be aware of. And so I think it's important to start, what's the foundational component of what social studies is really about? And just give you a second to read that. And I think more than anything, in today's day and age, how are we better preparing our students to be actively participating citizens? And not just for when they graduate or when they leave Webster or when they get into a college or career. What are they doing now as citizens and taking part and taking ownership? And we saw some of that already from the Clem North presentation to the Schrader and Thomas and Willink and Spry, that's really important. And so that's what's at the core of what social studies is. Yeah, absolutely.
When you talk about social studies, are you, you're talking about, are you, is this encompassing everything, including like global? It's all social studies?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes people think it's like one narrow thing, but it's really, it's all of those courses all the way throughout.
Yeah, and so social studies is really a multidisciplinary study. So think similar to science where science has, Earth science, it has biology. So social studies, we teach it integrated though. So we have, we have history, economics, psychology, political science, those are all considered the social studies. And in New York State, we teach them all together.
Okay. And it's, so it's not just about teaching history, it's really about, there's so much more just from reading this framework.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, for sure, for sure. And, and it's really about how, teaching kids the skills, and we'll talk about that, really, and there it is, right? The purposeful integration of content and skills, right? And exploring multiple stories. And history is, is about multiple stories, right? And, and a historian takes those stories and takes those sources and puts them together into, into a framework. But ultimately, it's up to the students to decide and providing them the skills and the knowledge to be able to say, this is what I think based on the evidence that's presented and through primary sources and evidence-based discussions. And really, that question, it's no longer about reciting facts and figures, it's no longer about regurgitating, it's factoid, so you can do well on Jeopardy. The question that I'm always presenting to our teachers is what do we want students to do with what they know? All right, so it's not just about knowing or doing, it's about knowing and doing together in a purposeful manner, which is to be an actively participating citizen. And then those skills, these six social studies practices are at the core of the, this interdisciplinary field known as social studies. And I won't read them all, but again, it's more than just simply memorizing names and dates. What, what is going on around that event that helps influence it? What, what role does geography play in, in having an event transpire, right? And an adept social studies teacher is going to weave all of those and then ask students to, to see those connections and see those components.
So I think, I think that the, what is happening in social studies is that the content itself is becoming much more a vehicle for the skills. It's not so much, oh geez, in ninth grade, I got to cover 2,000 years of history and then in 10th grade, I got to cover the rest of it. It's really looking at the history and, well, instead of covering all four River Valleys, say in ninth grade, can I cover one of them and then have those skills be transferred over? You know, what, what with, what can I do with the content? I think for a long time, social studies has sort of been taught like passively on the sidelines, like, you know, memorize when these wars started and then memorize these leaders and memorize, a lot of rope memorization, which is really counterintuitive to how you would teach any skills. Like if you were going to teach somebody how to play football, you wouldn't sit them down in a classroom and give them the history of football and make them watch videos on football and make them memorize players. You'd take them outside and you would teach them how to pass and how to tackle and do all those things. And so I think especially like for me specifically, as a 12th grade social studies teacher, really trying to.
trying to move from the passive and getting, using that content as a vehicle for the skills, like you all saw on your visit last week about using, you know, looking at that story from The Simpsons, and looking at historical thinking, and being able to critically, you know, look at and critique some people in history, rather than just, you know, the social studies really is a lot of shades of gray. You know, it's really, a lot of people want to put things in boxes, but a lot of it will not fit neatly into one box. So really, you know, like Terry was mentioning earlier, with the multiple perspectives, multiple stories, really thinking about the story that you're being told, like, did the seniors really win the tug of war, or was it because I didn't engage in the tug of war? You know, there's a perspective there that you can really tie back into this.
It is well played.
I don't know how I come back from that. But when we think about social studies, content still matters, it's still important, right? But content without skill, what's the purpose? And it's really helping our kids understand the purpose, the why. And if there's, if you have, if you interact with students, or you maybe have some young ones at home, you know, the first question is always, why? Why are you asking me to do this? Why is this important to learn? Why is this important to do? And so those play a critical role. And then the conceptual understandings allow us to make connections across time and across space, that maybe with Alex mentioned, the River Valley civilizations. We don't have to learn about every River Valley civilization, and no offense to any that we don't get a chance to get into, but once you learn about one, you have a pretty good sense of what's going to happen, right? Humans are pretty predictable. And so our stories tend to be pretty predictable as well. Now with that, New York State has adjusted its assessments. So the prior New York State social studies assessments in 10th grade, the global exam, the, I would say dreaded global exam, and then the United States History exam. Both of those were 50 multiple choice questions, there were a number of written essays that were primarily around regurgitating fact. And as a teacher, you played the game, is this going to be on the test this year, right? And then you crack open it, and Alex can attest, everybody cracks open, all the teachers crack open and say, oh yeah, covered that, covered that, ooh, I was out that day, right? Or, I don't even know who that is. And that happens every year. And so this is really a shift away from almost that lottery, that content lottery that sometimes gets played. And so it's really about thinking skills, it's about analyzing documents and stimulus, it's about writing short answer responses that require some connection, and it's about thinking about broad issues in your essays, so enduring issues. What's something that has happened? We can talk about power from the moment of recorded history, and probably even before, right? And that is an enduring issue. We can talk about civics and constitutional issues from the moment our constitution was approved, right? And so we can make connections, and that's really what it is about, is helping kids see those connections so that they can better understand their world today, and then also understand what had happened in the past. And so this is a traditional multiple choice question that you might see on a Regents exam about the Incas. And so if you spend a lot of time studying South American history, pre-Columbian South American history in your classroom, then your teacher had a pretty good, your students had a pretty good chance of getting this question right. If you didn't then, or if a kid was absent, or then you maybe, it was kind of a, it was a chance that you weren't going to get there.
Terrorist army, baby.
And, right, and so we, we sort of, if, when you think of Incas, think of this, right? That's all you think about, right? And so this was, this is from the June 2020 Global Regents Exam.
Oh my God, there's so many kids talking about this question.
Was this the new?
This is the new, yeah, 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 actually, thank you, Shannon, I will mention. So it's about looking at the stimulus, the picture, this is a political cartoon from the time. And then they have to know some content, but they also have to know broader issues. And I'll be collecting your answers for all three of these questions afterwards. And I did link the full exam, if you're interested in checking it out.
With the answer key.
You do have access, there it is, right there, you do have access to the answer key. It is on there, yeah. But I have confidence that many of you can do very well. And so just in terms of the exams, exams themselves, this year was the first year Webster offered the new exam in US, in global. It was supposed to start with, actually, the year of the closure, and we didn't give it that year, we didn't give it last year, and so Webster, we gave it along with everybody else in New York State this past June, and we will again. The US exam was supposed to be given, but due to the unfortunate circumstances in Buffalo and some questions, some things that could have been traumatic for our students, the decision was made by New York State to not give that exam. So we will be administering, along with the rest of New York State, the first United States History Regents Exam in June. And so that's big broad picture in terms of our program. But I wanted to highlight, and that's why I've asked Alex, not only to talk about The Simpsons, but also to talk about the Seal of Civic Readiness. And the Seal of Civic Readiness is a new honor that is being offered for our students to help engage them and allow them to demonstrate their civic participation in, both from an academic perspective, and then also from a community and activism perspective. And so the Seal of Civic Readiness, and if you recall from the board meeting last June, I think it was, we talked about the Seal of Biliteracy, a similar type of process, and I won't read it all together, but basically, it's intended to be a flexible honor that allows students to demonstrate their capacity through their coursework, but then also if they're involved in their community, and really trying to encourage that type of involvement. And we were one of the first, one of the districts, and actually, here's how you can earn some points. And again, I won't go through each point by point, but they get points for their work in class, and then they also get points for either participating in some sort of civic experience, or a high school capstone project, which is what Alex is going to talk about. We also, this year, we have a middle school, eighth grade, social studies project that all of our students participate in. And we've done that for close to 10 years, where they identify an issue, and then they research both sides of the issue. And we're actually working on the potential of tweaking that a little bit, so all of our students, should they choose to, could enter high school already one-sixth of the way to getting their Seal of Civic Readiness. So we're very excited about that.
And the nice thing about what New York State has set up here is it gives us a lot of latitude as the district and as the social studies department to fit this to the needs of our students. So obviously, teaching Citizens in Action, this, you know, we have a activism project that is pretty much, we were already doing it, we didn't even have to like really create anything new aside from having students present at the end of the year, an additional time. But also, you know, with discussions with my colleagues, a student in AP Economics, in AP Psych, in Law and Justice, in Economics, they would all have equal opportunity to get the seal, even though they're not in the year-long civics class.
And so as I mentioned, Webster was one of two districts in Monroe County, we were chosen to pilot. Wester Rondacoit took a little different approach. Their approach was to have every student participate in a mandatory project. Ours was really trying to think a little bit differently, and not create something new, but to take what do we already have and try to make that work. We did have nine students who volunteered to participate in this program. We had a number of other students who unfortunately, after AP exams, had kind of lost a little steam, so we didn't quite have as many as we had hoped, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to have more students participate this year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alex, and he can talk a little bit about how it unfolded in his classroom.
Yeah, so I had, I believe, nine students, out of all the seniors I had last year, complete the requirements for the Seal of Civic Readiness. And they got, they were very, they first wanted to know if they were going to get medals, so. Big props to Paparigios in the Village for making me some medals, so they could have them for graduation. They didn't even saw them, they had a seal on them, the animal. And so these, I cracked myself up thinking about it. These projects that they picked, these were all student-driven products, these were all topics that they selected that were near and dear to them. You know, I had one student who looked at autism in the workforce because her sister was on the autism spectrum and was a graduate of the 12-1 program from Webster, and firsthand seen the struggles that her sister was having gaining employment after high school. So she pursued that, and for example, one of the things she did, she went to the president of the Chamber of Commerce for Webster, and went and interviewed him and gave him suggest, because when she interviewed him, you know, he had no idea about any accommodations or things of that nature, and like she gave him suggestions of things that he could be doing, you know, as the Chamber of Commerce president. Last year, one of my students spoke at the board meeting about LGBTQ plus representation in school curriculum, and that was born out of, there's actually two students that did the same project. And one of the cool things is that naturally, you'll see collaboration as the project goes on. I had two students that were doing women's rights, and they sort of came together and did their project together. We had a member of our green team at Webster Schrader, you know, her, she started doing composting and things of that nature at Webster, which was born out of the project. I had another student that was looking at like funding for music education, and looking at sort of the, you know, what assignments music teachers are getting compared to other content area teachers. And so it's really like a year-long process for them, they pick a topic that they're interested in, they start doing research. I would be remiss if I didn't give Jen Stragi a big shout out, because she has been an invaluable resource in doing this project each year. They go out and they interview people related to the topic, they research public policy, they analyze public policy, and then ultimately, they put like a Google website together where they present to the class, and then also, if they'd like to get the seal, last year they presented to Terry and myself, Paul sat in on a couple, another social studies teacher sat in on a couple presentations. So they had to just go that little extra mile to get the seal.
And I just wanted to close by saying, not only through the Seal of Civic Readiness, but through all of our social studies, our goal, we are not teaching kids what to think, we're providing them skills with how to think, and how to engage in their world that they're, that they are already in, not that they're entering, that they're already in. And with that, we'll turn it over for questions. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask, this is continuing again this year?
Yes, yep.
How many students do you anticipate taking advantage of this, the civic readiness component this year as compared to last year, and how is it being promoted throughout the school, community?
Yeah, so I know our Citizens in Action class, we have...
Four, we have four sections total, I have two sections, and then Dave Wallman at Schrader has two sections. So I have approximately, I have about like 45 kids that are taking CIA. So obviously, I expect the number to be a little higher than nine this year. You know, hopefully, like, you know, just exponential growth, it'd be great if even like 20 of those kids do it, you know, because that'd be 50% growth from last year. Another cool thing too, that I also have a section of CIA where the seniors from the 12-11 program push into my class, and so what was really cool last year is they actually did sort of a modified version of this, and they did this entire project, just sort of modified it for themselves, and they looked at like homelessness, the quality of zoos in Rochester, you know, safe places after school. So it's really, the nice thing about this project is that any, really any student can do this and engage with it, once they find what they're really interested in.
And I would anticipate our AP Government classes, more students will participate through that. I think we had originally focused on the AP Gov classes, and I think particularly last year, last spring, a lot of our seniors in particular were pretty well spent. So I'm hoping, I don't want to say a number, but I will, I'm hoping if we can get to, at least, we can break 50, I would be, I'd be excited.
Thank you.
I'm always thinking about college getting into schools, would this be something good that a student could use as part of their resume, or whatever they call it now?
Absolutely. I actually have, I have a senior right now, and that's, hopefully, it'll be on her, on her activities transcript and things that she's working towards. So absolutely, I think anything that will help demonstrate, to set you apart from another student, absolutely, I think that would be something that they could, they definitely want to highlight.
Yeah, I think it could be on their resume, it could also, you know, it's, to me, it would be a great topic to write about for like a college essay. Also, the cool thing is, I've been teaching CIA since 2017, the 2017-18 school year, and what's been a really cool experience for me is every couple, every year, I've had like one or two kids that message me or email me about the project that they did in class, and now they're in college, they're taking a class where it's connected, you know, and they're continuing to learn about it, which is really cool.
Exciting, exciting, thank you.
I just want to add one thing, I have a technical background, and so, you know, there tends to be a right answer and a wrong answer. But the thing that's most important that you teach is critical thinking skills, because anybody could apply a formula to solve a problem, but they can't solve real-world manufacturing problems or other technical problems without those critical thinking skills. So it's so important what you do, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mike said too, because learning how to understand the problem in front of you and how to research it, and come up with your own conclusions, that's really important, not just for school, but it is for work, because you're going to go into those situations and you've got a problem solved, and so you need to know, who do I go to talk to? Maybe I should go talk to the Chamber of Commerce about what they're doing to help with, with helping autism at work, in the workplace. So I think those things are great. If you need anybody to sit on your panel for your projects, I would love to. All these topics are interesting to me, especially because I come from the private world, especially talking about that autism in the workplace, like, that isn't, you know, that is something that I think could be more consideration can be put into place, especially for which jobs are suitable for these types of skill sets, and how you can, you know, bring your community in, because that's a part of giving back to your community, is providing jobs and workplaces for people, so I think that's really great.
We have it on the record. Thank you.
And The Simpsons was fantastic, because you do, you do, first of all, The Simpsons loves to fill in, you know, stuff with real word going on, and now putting it in these ridiculous, sometimes ridiculous situations. And that's how you remember, that's also how you remember what's going on and how to think through, is because you're like, oh my gosh, that is like the same type of situations, which are ridiculous, in some of the kids' characters are, you know, who they are. But I think that was a great relation, for them to relate, seeing it.
Thank you. Like I said in my Teachers Teach Teachers session the other day, there is literally a Simpsons episode for everything.
Everything.
So we're using, we're actually using The Simpsons tomorrow to talk about ethos, pathos, and logos, you know, if you want to stop by again, just let me know.
I want to be your student.
Oh, thank you.
You guys know I'm the history person all the way, except for the last 17 years of my career, and I've watched the transition. I used to teach Global 1 and 2, now I teach US History and Pig and Economics. And your classroom is by far the most inspiring room I've ever been in. I love, first of all, I'm a big nerd, so I love everything that's on the wall. But what got me interested in history was my high school teacher, and I never thought I was going to become a teacher until I went back to that person and said, you know what, you inspired me to do more. And you are the kind of teacher that teaches in a way that inspires kids to come back. And I cannot wait for my own kids to be in classes like yours. So I mean, as a teacher, great, as a Webster resident, for my kids, even better. And I know these tests in and out, and I truly believe that moving away from the, having to memorize content into more of a, like being able to find the content in the documents, that's the real world. I tell my kids all the time, you guys can look this stuff up, you don't need to memorize the details, but you need to know how to find it and interpret what you're finding. And they're like, oh, well, that's not so bad. So I think it's a totally different way of supporting kids and where they're at, because they can use what they already have without having to necessarily memorize everything. And I think the more we look at the data that comes with these exams, I think we're going to see a lot of progress, not only in terms of scores, but in the actual ability to learn, because it's going to cross all content areas with the skills that they're learning, so.
How did you feel the testing did with the new global, the new global test last year?
I thought it was a fair, it was a fair test. I think overall, we, the passing rate was a little bit higher than it has been. I will say, it's designed to have a lower floor and a higher I will say it's designed to have a lower floor and a higher ceiling. So it's, it's, and I'm going to say this, the opportunity for passing, there's a greater opportunity for passing, but there's a much more difficult opportunity to get mastery, so that eighty-five or higher. And that was part of the design process.
Okay. The essay is usually like a fourth, four or five level, whereas some multiple choice kind of range from one to four. So it's definitely more accessible, I think, to specialized, the speciality of students and English language learners. I've done text analysis on the whole test, but it really does seem more realistic to what kids really need to know and how they learn across the board than helping our kids get to that proficiency level. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Just a comment, in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, the Seal of Bilinguality, I believe it started then, and there were only maybe ten students. And I look at what we had in June, so I have high hopes and I have faith in the two of you and the rest of the department that we will, we will break barriers with that as well. So I thank you. It was a joy to come into your classroom, to see students not sitting in rows listening to you spit facts at them. They were engaged in conversations. It was an exciting classroom to be in, so I thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
And I think you'd see that in the vast majority, most days. Some days, you know, some days there's a, there's a couple slides to get, there's some content for sure, but I think the vast majority of our social studies teachers, that's what you're going to see. And it's really about having those conversations, because I don't want to, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I will say in my schooling experience, we never were taught how to have conversations, particularly around really difficult topics. In part because there was always one answer. But the things we're talking about and things we're dealing with have, have multiple perspectives that we have to engage with. And if we don't teach kids how to have those conversations in a safe environment, they're not going to be prepared to have those conversations once they do leave the safe confines of a school classroom.
I don't really have much more to add, but it is very attainable, which is nice to see. I have two teenage girls who struggle with, you know, history. But I can even see them attaining this if they were really interested in it and wanted to put the effort in.
Absolutely.
My husband and I are kind of history buffs, so we probably push this a little bit. But it just, it's attainable no matter what your skill level is. It's, they were a little fearful of the Seal of Bilinguality because both are, you know, their strengths in Spanish aren't the same, but this is something that I think could be attainable no matter what you bring to the table.
Absolutely. And if they're in scouts or they volunteer at church, they're involved in some sort of community organization or even at a school organization, all that can count towards their seal.
Thank you.
Of course.
Want just grades anymore. They want to see what you participated in, what else you've accomplished. So I feel like getting that, adding that on gives students another, it's another additional resource for them to getting into the colleges they want to go to.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for opening your classroom, first of all, Alex, and then obviously Terry for your local leadership and your state leadership. Quick question, how many other school districts in our area are going to be jumping on now that we were part of the pilot?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to. I'm not sure, Aaron.
Three more? Great, which is outstanding, so thanks.
All right, I have a motion to approve the social studies grade six through twelve instructor report as presented. So moved, Jen, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Freeman, you have a list of things, but yeah, thank you. We'll start with, looks like we'll start with the treasures report. Yeah, top that.
Make it as interesting as history.
I'll see what I can do.
Is there a Simpsons episode for the treasury?
Yeah, can you present it in Bart's voice?
Yeah. Talk about prohibition. Perhaps the greatest Simpsons episode. All right, so first one up is the July treasures report. Not too much fun there, sorry, can't make that one exciting. Because July is probably fiscally and financially the least.
It's boring.
Boring, you know, it's a good, nothing happens in July financially, as you can tell. But one thing with the report that we're adding after discussions with our auditors this year is just doing a, there's a new report in there, a new page, just showing cash balances for all our funds. We've teased that out and made that a separate report within the treasures report. So you see all the major funds with the receipts and disbursements to start off. That's the huge change for this upcoming year that we're going to work into every monthly treasures report. Other than that, no real changes and not a lot of activity in any of the funds going on in the month of July.
Questions? All right, motion to approve the July twenty twenty-two treasures report as presented. Charlie, so moved? Second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up is going to be the SEAKER resolutions, to approve that first. And what that SEAKER is short for is State Environmental Review, Quality Review Act. We call it SEAKER for short. And in short, what that is, is the district, we changed the order.
Okay, that's fine.
We're doing this first for structural purposes. Proven the SEAKER before a resolution.
Okay.
So I didn't catch that, I apologize.
Do we need amend agenda?
I don't think so.
No, because I think they're.
Because it's.
They're in the board business. So SEAKER, what it is, is just we're required by law to see what the environmental impact would be for any of our construction. So we send a notification out to other, Town of Webster, Highway Department, Monroe County, DOT, Town of Penfield. We send a notification that this is what we're looking at doing, and then they respond back. So in essence, the first resolution up is the district declaring that there is really no environmental impact. We've checked with all those agencies and this is a type one action that we could go ahead with. There's no historical landmarks we're touching, there's no huge disruptions. The last time we had to go through a significant SEAKER was for the bus garage in twenty eighteen. Because of the DEC and the US Army Corps of Engineers with floodplain and wetlands. But for this one, there is no major SEAKER issues on the environmental review.
Yeah, it's a roll, is there any questions before? All right, this is a roll call, a motion to approve the SEAKER resolution for the Capitol Project vote and the negative declaration. Do we, we have to move it though?
We need a motion, a second first.
So moved, Linda, second, Shanna, and then a roll call.
Okay, Shanna?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then included with that, you see the standard form that we fill out stating it's a negative declaration. And that will be submitted to all the interested parties upon your approval tonight, notifying them back that we've completed the process and it goes on file with the state. So next up now is the official proposition resolution that you'll see there with the recital that we are now the lead agency for SEAKER, that there wasn't anything particular there that stands out and what kind of action that is. And then the resolution just spells out when we're voting, where we're going to advertise, how often we're advertising, what the proposition will be, and the notices given for the vote date in December. Questions on that? And this is all written by our attorneys and proofed by us and then double-checked by the attorneys again covers our bases.
So we can only advertise for what's in here?
This is the minimum of what we have to do.
The minimum.
The legally minimum requirements. We far exceed those minimums, but it just spells out how many times and with how many days that we have to do it legally.
All right, motion to approve the resolution for the special school district meeting of the qualified voters of the Webster Central School District on Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and proposition. We will do a roll call, but I need a motion and a second, please. Motion, Charlie, second, Jen.
Shanna?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is the legal notice that'll be published. Don't need a roll call on this one, but Mike, to your point, you get to see how many times we do have to publish it. It's spelled out in this, that'll be in the Webster Herald during the weeks of, end of October, November, twice in November, and then once in the beginning of December. This is the kind of abridged version of the larger resolution.
Questions? All right, motion to approve the legal notice for the special school district meeting of the voters. So moved, Mike, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes seven, nothing. Sorry. And the video part?
Yes, so I'm going to take you through a little video that we put together on kind of a big picture that summarizes everything we're looking at. And then once that's done, I'd like to show you the website, which we did have some technical glitches and thanks to a community member that notified us today, which you'll see they're all cured. But the website's really going to be a work in progress. It's going to be kind of a living document as we go through this. Anything else we do or add throughout the process will go and live here. But I'll start us off with the video here. Every five years, we're required by New York State to do a building condition survey. The last one for the district was in twenty fifteen, so we were due again in twenty twenty. But with the pandemic, ours was in twenty twenty-two. So seven years, our architects and engineers put together a top-to-bottom overhaul of everything that really needs to get done from a maintenance perspective.
One of the things that we learned throughout the last couple of years was the importance of air quality in a learning environment, but certainly in all of our spaces. And when it comes to the, the air conditioning part of HVAC, right now it's a situation where we don't ever want it to be contingent upon where you live in the district as to whether your children or our staff can experience air conditioning or not.
It's kind of hard to learn since it's hot and we usually open the windows and there's lots of noise and the fans, they're also not lots of noise. And after recess, it's like really hot and I, when you come inside, it's honestly not much better.
At my old school, our room didn't have air conditioning, so people used to complain a lot about opening the windows and closing the windows and it was just chaos. And having air conditioning at the school is so much better, makes it way easier to learn. Because when you're taking like a test or doing whatever you are in class, it's just much nicer because you don't have to focus on how hot you are and just you don't have to sweat the entire class.
In addition to that, our buildings are becoming twelve-month buildings. We have summer programs, community programs. See a lot of that continuing into the future. And so we want to be able to respond to that. We have more money dedicated to classroom remodeling and some of our older buildings as well. So you'll see a new cabinetry, a new flooring, new carpeting, new ceilings, new lighting. We're looking right now to possibly get another entrance in and out to help alleviate some of those bottlenecks in traffic. Looking to make it safer at Will Lake Middle School. Looking at ways we can redesign the parking lot here to alleviate traffic that backs up to Harrow Road, get it off of Publisher's Parkway. Two of the things that people will probably notice is our turf stadiums. Right now, we're still at the original turf. The life expectancy on those is ten years, and so we are well beyond its life expectancy right now. So it's due both at Schrader and at Thomas, the original stadiums that were built, having the turf replaced there.
Our OWL program has an elementary, a middle school, and a high school component to it, and that has grown over the past several years. What we have found is that when we can bring a program back to our own home district, that benefits our kids greatly. It allows all of our staff to be involved in the school community, involved in professional development and professional learning. We can bring it back on campus. Parents and families are extremely happy with that, and we want that for our kids.
It's really going to touch every aspect of the district and improve it. We're really a community resource, and so we want to try to provide the best experience for everybody that is coming through our buildings. That's what this project is really about, trying to touch everything and make it better district-wide.
What you're really doing is you're investing in your future. And as a community, I believe that is truly something that we have done a good job with, that we want to continue to do a good job with, is invest in our kids, but invest in what the school system does for a community in a positive way that I think that we can all be proud of.
All right, any questions on that before? And that, so here's the link right here to the Capitol Improvement Project. We have a frequently asked questions section, zoom that out, that as we get emails or calls, questions in, we'll look to add those bits of information to this kind of running document. Down here at the bottom too, just wanted to point out, is all the presentations that we've done around the Capitol Project planning, going all the way back to May tenth, the workshop we had with the building condition survey information, and then some of that preliminary information we talked about of costs and what to do at each buildings. Our July update and then the August fifteenth update as well are there for historical documentation. Want to reference back and see kind of the planning thought process as we've gone through this. And then, you know, a couple more, the proposed improvements by the numbers. We've highlighted and kind of teased out the major categories and where it's coming from.
Did you put the chart on there that had, you know, the, it was the pie chart, so to speak, and it had, you know, the same thing, it had the, it had broken out in categories, but it was more of a visual, so you could see.
Like that, oh, the funnel graphic?
Yeah.
Oh, we did it more like traditional listing out with numbers here.
Okay.
That one is still, it lives right here in the August update.
Yeah, that's fine. I just thought it was a good visual to understand where the funds are really going.
That one is over here, right there.
That one.
Yeah, we just kind of broke it out a little bit more in that other document.
I had it different in my head. I had it as a pie chart, but yes, that's, that's good.
Was that the one? Maybe I'm thinking of another one.
That definitely, no, that makes sense, because that, those were the categories. You know, this is a little different than what we've seen in other projects, right? Because this is, this is maintenance, so this, these are things that need to be done and they've been evaluated by engineers. So I just, this is a nice way to look and see, we're trying, you know, what, what this project really consists of. I did see you had an image of the tennis courts in that video, but I don't think the tennis courts are part of the, there's.
We're trying to get them done within the sixty-nine and a half million dollar project.
Okay.
But right now, the cost is just getting higher and higher every time we, we look to do that. So it's something that maybe if we wait a little, just a tad longer, that'll drop down because there isn't that many vendors.
Okay.
That's the problem is with no competition on that, so, but it's on the to-do list.
Okay.
And then a couple more, we do improvements by the numbers. Yep, I pulled that one up already for you. And then we have a school-by-school flyout overview that we've done, every building, what's proposed, the total cost at that building in summation for all eleven buildings. And then we have what it means to the taxpayers. And so what we've done here is kind of taken on the, on the journey, you know, we're proposing a hundred and fifteen million, we're going to use ten million. a hundred and fifteen million. We're gonna use ten million dollars of the capital reserve, bringing it down to one oh five is what we will finance. Um, figuring maybe twenty-three years right now, that's estimated. Um, that with uh, you know, principal and interest, we'd look just short of a hundred and forty-five million dollars. Um, the state gives us aid on the interest, um, so we'd be getting a little over a hundred and three million dollars, leaving the local share at just under forty-two, which gives us an average yearly amount of local share on the capital exclusion, about one point three million dollars or one point one percent, um, based on this year's um tax levy, about forty dollars per year on your annual tax bill. So we've highlighted those financial impacts uh as well on the flyout on the left-hand side. Um, long-term, I think what we'd like to do is kind of have a once, you know, Joe Montemarin and myself and the communications team have kind of sketched out of having this be more than just the capital improvement twenty-twenty and doing some more to show everything we're doing, the hundred thousand dollar projects, some of the in-house things that we're doing, you know, and having some different buttons uh and changing this around. But for right now, we're focusing on the two thousand and twenty-two, but like I said, we're, we're looking to improve this, to show uh the community, what did we do in two thousand and eighteen? So that was four years ago, you know. What did we do in two thousand and sixteen? Um, and kind of update every um, every so often and just kind of show what we're doing and what we're putting into our facilities uh with these propositions.
Yeah. And when we talked about this, um, you know, there's, there's, there's risks at putting off this work that has to get done, um, not only for the process that it takes to get approved, but then it takes another year after it's approved for things to be awarded, for us to get proposals, for designs to put to, put together for engineers. So these things that are overdue, if we delay on them even more, it's gonna exacerbate it by even more, another five years. So some of these things are really, come to a critical point where they have to be repaired.
And so, you know, projecting a, a vote in December of two thousand and twenty-two, we look at really like six months of hardcore, all right, uh, now architectural and engineering drawings. Um, so about six months to submit something to SED, and then probably um with some of the mechanicals, we're looking at a, a year approval, um, in which would hit us, you know, in shovels in the ground, uh, you know, in time for summer um of twenty-four.
Right.
Um, so, you know, you won't see much action.
Even now.
For at least eighteen to twenty-four months in, in, in ideal, perfect world.
Okay.
Um, and like, you know, as, as side note, i- in the month of July alone, with the current project, we went through two project managers at SED because they change over and have huge employee turnover as well. So it's, you know, all trying to s- yeah, you know, to have the stars aligned with some of that stuff.
And the state education department is also reviewing this to say, do you really, do you really need this? Like, they're comparing it, right? They're looking at that building survey. We can't just submit.
So, yeah.
For whatever we want. They, they substantiate it and say, we agree, like this work is needed.
Sometimes they'll make us go over the top and look at areas that we maybe haven't submitted. Um, you know, something that doesn't have to do with the project. Use the example, um, if you remember the old bathrooms at Duett Road, those of you that might remember the two-tone bricks in there, um, that was off of a project that had nothing to do with the bathrooms at Duett. They were doing some ceiling work in the centrum area, uh, but you submit the whole floor plan, and they said, oh, that wall, they had that old kind of like privacy wall in the Duett bathrooms, that wall needs to be moved, but we're not doing the bathroom. Doesn't matter. Um, so we had to divert dollars and move that wall back, but, you know, at the time, the tile stock didn't match because you weren't doing the whole bathroom, you're just moving the wall. So that's why they always had the two-tone bathrooms, um, until we've, uh, replaced them all in two thousand and sixteen. But those things could happen.
Yeah.
The state looks at everything and says, no, you have to do this too.
Yeah. That's something as a parent I didn't really understand in this whole process is, you know, having the engineering and the building survey, having to decide, because if we couldn't do everything that's in, that they're calling out for everything, right? It would be, forgot how much even more it would have been to do everything. So you have to decide what needs to get done, what can we, you know, what, what will the, the community support getting done right now? And then you have to get approval through the state education department before you even move on to engineering and submitting, uh, you know, they have submittals they have to do, engineers have to review and approve it, award, and actually purchase and actually start to plan the work.
Questions on the website? Anything further you think?
Has this, has this been shared out yet, the website?
Yes.
It has? Okay, so we, we sent it out through like district communications. Did I miss it?
One, one parent square.
I know, I've already watched it.
It is on parent square.
Yeah, I know, I already watched it.
Sorry, Joe Montener. Oh, yes. Okay.
Ended up in your digest.
Darn it. This was just for information.
This is just for information. Like you said, this is, you know, we'll, this'll be adjusted throughout the process.
Perfect.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah.
Sure. The school-by-school is really helpful, too. I like that one.
It really, it's a great source of information to people, so I really appreciate.
In the next couple of weeks, too, um, for parents, community members, should have those, you know, boards that kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Pinpoint everything that's going on to be able to hang up hopefully in the next couple of weeks, um, to get those up into the, into all the buildings.
Is there any kind of session where we have with the community where they can ask questions, or do they have to submit questions in writing? I don't know if we do a public hearing for any of this before the vote?
Yeah, and the December meeting, we'll do one final uh kind of public hear- uh, do we word it as a public hearing, Cindy? I can't remember off the top of my head.
I have to look.
But it, like, one last opportunity for input, um, and just kind of where are we in, in the process. Um, but, you know, we get regular emails and phone calls throughout.
Okay. Do you ever add those to the frequently asked questions?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll, yeah, leave that as kind of like a living document.
Yep.
It's one of the more complicated processes the state has us jump through, but.
If I understand it, it's a really good sign.
Well, luckily, it's like time five. You know, the fifth time I'm starting, it's starting to stick, so, yeah.
Awesome. Very good.
Financial audit.
All right. Bear with me a little bit. All righty. Next up is our financial audit. It was completed uh last week for twenty-one, twenty-two. Just wanted to take you through some of the highlights of that audit. Um, you know, talk about reserves, fund balance, the financials um that showed up in this, and then talk a little bit about the findings and the corrective actions we need to take for this year. So first up on the general fund budget, since it is, uh, makes up ninety-five percent of all of our funds. Uh, revenues, sales tax really um on the financial side outpaced our budget expectations. State aid uh was up as well, uh, cuz I think two years ago, um, you know, twenty twenty-one, uh, the state was withholding funds from us, and they actually made us whole in twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, history shows they've never been great at paying us back for withholding funds. Um, so that was bonus uh state aid in twenty-one, twenty-two that we were not expecting. So our revenue overall was about six point six million to the positive side. Um, so that was, you know, three point six percent variance in actual versus budgeted. So, you know, pretty close to, you know, hitting the mark on, on the budget side to what we actually took in versus what was budgeted. On the expenditure side, um, majority of our federal stimulus spending has been double-booked, so we did create surplus on the instructional side. Now, why are we doing that? It's that when the federal stimulus is gone, those people can stay because they are inherently in our, in our budget. Um, so we have that now as part of our um budget. Also, one of the things that's on the expenditure side, it's, you know, positive financial, but it's terrible for Mr. Swinson and HR over there. Uh, we have multiple unfilled support staff positions throughout last year. Um, you know, even um, you know, comparing budget to actual on the, on the support staff side, you know, those struggling to find people, the pe- you know, budgetarily, they're sitting there, but we're just, you know, struggling to fill. Um, even, you know, you could say the same thing on what we have budgeted for substitutes. Um, there's nowhere, you know, even close to what we actually need for substitutes and what we've planned for and what we've had even in the past five, seven, eight years ago. Um, so those staffing shortages create more surplus and benefits as well on the expenditure side. So um, we actually, um, we target to spend about ninety-seven percent of our budget. Um, so, you know, a three percent conservative approach. Um, we only spent ninety-five percent of our budget, uh, because of a lot of those changes. So we have a, a five percent variance in the actual versus budgeted, which you'll see uh play out in the financial statements. Questions on that before I move on? Then the fund balance, because of those uh two things, um, reserves, we didn't make much interest, uh, but we were able to transfer about nine million dollars uh to bring our total fund balance up uh to forty-eight point two million dollars. And that's, um, if you look at it compared to our twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we have twenty-five percent of our budget covered by reserves. Uh, while we're doing this next year, um, probably two, it probably takes two to three years, that will go down because we're planning to use ten million dollars of that of the capital reserve. Uh, just so, you know, probably will be next year, probably won't even be the second fiscal year, cuz it probably won't hit until we close the books on twenty-three, twenty-four, or maybe even twenty-four, twenty-five, depending on the timing of when we would need to use those, uh, those funds. Uh, debt service is up a little bit as well. Um, we made a premium on our bonds on the short term, so added some extra money to the debt service. And then school lunch, we'll talk a little bit later. Uh, revenues outpaced our expenditures. Um, fund balance was up one point seven million dollars. Uh, that's something, uh, that's pretty consistent for most school districts in New York State. That is something, um, many of us have never ever seen that have, um, run school lunch programs. And it's all due to the free, free meals program and what uh USDA was reimbursing districts nationwide for. Um, so we have a total fund balance there, up to about two point four in the school lunch. Other things, you know, school lunch, I say we're financially positioned to weather the next storm. Um, will free meals come back? Other impacts we're seeing there, labor market, the styrofoam ban, um, we, we are paying more. We've actually are test, uh, testing, bringing back the old school trays in a couple of buildings. Um, and really, we're still seeing product shortages. Um, just had a conversation with a, with a local restaurateur the other day at lunch. Uh, I was saying, what I ordered for lunch with his restaurant, I can't get from the same vendor, cuz they're sending them to uh the restaurant side. Um, so, uh, we were talking about that and then got into the price of eggs and ruined the rest of Mrs. Lance's meal because of border. Uh, some of the other funds, special aid, uh, we, you'll see, we reversed the deficit. Lot of activity, more so than normal, uh, when you look at the audit because of the federal grant activity with all the extra federal stimulus. Set debt service, additional earnings because of the short-term borrowing. And then the capital fund, you'll see, there's a huge deficit because we haven't permanently financed, um, so it's, it's borrowing from all the other funds that we have to offset that. So we did have two audit findings. Uh, first one up is they'd like us to take a look at separation payments. So when people retire, um, retirement incentives for people, that it's kind of a standalone process uh with one person in HR, and so they'd like to see some double checks. So um, I have come up with a process. We're uh going to meet and iron out the kinks where there are second and tertiary checks in the process moving forward. Um, so you see, that will be our response of the corrective action plan. And then last, or the only, the second thing of the one or two items was, as we are um in excess of the federal regulations of only having three uh months of expenditures covered in the school lunch program, uh, my response to that is, well, it's been a fun ten years, where we've lost a quarter of a million dollars a year on average, and can't we just get one year to kind of take a deep breath and say, phew, we don't have to worry about structural deficit in this program? Um, but technically, we are um not in compliance. So we've come up with a game plan with the food service team, um, to kind of reinvest some of that money, buy some new equipment, a lot of, some new ovens, new coolers, um, and to try to uh show that we are thoughtfully utilizing that fund balance for the program, is in essence what they want you, what they want to see us do. Um, but while not, you know, tying our hands for the next ten years. And then one completed item that we were noted for, um, that we were written up for last year, they're combating us during this year. Um, we now have an operating gain for the Wonder Care program for positive fund balance for the first couple of years. Um, they were, they were hit pretty hard during the pandemic. Uh, upcoming audits, just for everybody to uh put on your radar, uh, for, we'll have the federal single audit, that's the auditors come back out, look at all the federal-funded programs uh more closely. Uh, then they'll audit the extra class accounts at the secondary buildings. And then, right now, we're working on, um, planning for the internal audit, where they uh zero in on a specific area um to di- do a deep dive on uh for the district. Most recently, we've had a technology audit, we've had the aquatic center uh audited, since they take a lot of cash, and then we also had the HR benefits process audited last year. So that's what we have coming up on the horizon. Questions on the audit?
I have no questions. One comment on the, the Wonder Care, something that I did not know. Um, and since being on the audit committee, you get to, you know, they give you so much great information. But um, that money that comes that they, you know, that now that they have on the positive side, that stays within the Wonder Care program. So it doesn't get used for something else in the school or somewhere else. Um, legally, we have to keep that money and it has to be spent for inside of that Wonder Care program. So it's not a revenue generating for.
Yeah, self-sustained, to be actually being reinvested back in the program.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just like three kids going through the program.
And again, this was information, so we don't have to, right? Or we do? It says info, but if I'm, do we vote?
You do have to.
Okay.
Uh, approve. Uh, this is, my presentation's for, I've tried to distill out the actual audit for you and hit the high points. We do need to officially approve the financial statements.
Motion to approve the financial statement. Shannon, second. Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes seven, nothing. Sorry. Corrective action plan.
And then last but not least is the separate management comment letter that has those two items that we were cited for, and our corrective action plan uh to address those two, two items that we were cited for.
So Brian, I, I mean, I imagine that nobody was signing them last year either. This was just something this year that they brought up.
For the school lunch?
No, for the, for the corrective action. Is this for the?
The separation payments.
Yeah, for the separation payments. I imagine, I mean, last year when we had our audit, it wasn't getting that second signature yet either.
So when it comes to the uh external audit, they always, it's big picture, look at all the financials. Um, but they always pick a couple areas to test.
Okay.
That, you know, it could be purchasing one year, it could be, uh, you know.
So they need a deeper dive on that one.
They, you know, they asked a whole bunch of questions uh from all of us to start in May, and then they're like, okay, well, we haven't looked at this maybe in three, five years. Let's take a look at that process, and that's, and they dug into that one.
Okay.
So Brian, I gotta believe every Monroe County school and every school in New York State had an excess in their uh school lunch fund as a result of the federal program. So is everybody just gonna go out there willy-nilly and, and spend on equipment, and then you're probably not gonna be able to get the equipment, cuz there's gonna be this rush of demand?
Yeah, that is very true. Um, so I think it's multi- we're, we have historically been one of the few districts that doesn't subsidize the school lunch with a general fund transfer. There are many districts that part of their budget that gets approved every year has two hundred and fifty thousand, hundred thousand dollars. has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, hundred-thousand dollars that automatically every year goes through school lunch to subsidize it. So some of them could have made the decision to not transfer that money and which then makes it look like they have less money than if they did previous. There's multiple ways you could, uh, attack that issue. Um, I, you know, I knew about the regulation with three months. I thought maybe we'd get a year grace period, uh, before we got written up for it. But, you know, it's a technicality, um, and, you know, we'll address it that way.
It is what it is.
Yeah. It's, it's a good problem to have and I, you know, if it happens again next year and they bring back free and reduced, uh, universal meals, you know, we'll, we'll buy more ovens.
Brian, does the contract language need to be revised as well to be in line with the, the procedure that's being changed?
No, uh, it, it really doesn't impact the contract language. It's more about our internal process of how we, you know, do a file review for somebody who's approaching retirement and calculating, um, what their retirement incentive would be. And then making sure there's a second set of eyes on it and then, you know, a third outside set of eyes on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, motion to approve the corrective action plan for twenty-one, twenty-two audit. Charlie, so moved, second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, nothing, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
We're moving on to board reports. Um, I know we're running super, super late. A lot of the stuff was kind of covered earlier, at least from the secondary schools. So we'll go through, but maybe we can just kind of do the abridged version and kind of fly through with the good stuff. I know there's probably trunk retreats and we did homecoming and all that. So maybe we can just kind of fly through this one. Who wants to start? State Road meets next week. Done, love it. Good start. Somebody meets tonight. Right. Do it is tonight.
So I, I gave them the, the board report, so Principal Mark is covering it.
Okay, I knew there was one tonight.
Plank South is tomorrow.
It's Friday and Schrader, they pretty much covered everything unless I'm missing something, right?
Nope, we've gotten off.
A lot of stuff has been covered, but, um, you know, the first fifteen days of bus activity, they had some behavioral issues, so they got with the MTSS team and made up twelve lessons for the buses. And the kids were excited to have those and receive those. And it seems to have corrected the problem. So I think it's a great way to solve a problem.
Yeah, that's great.
Something different.
Yeah, no, I like that.
Versus all the other fun there happened.
Exactly, but that's a great, great plan to address. I'm sure the transportation department was very happy.
A lot of, you know, what you're, I mean, the only thing they didn't talk about is that they're discussing, um, owl goal, um, logos. And so they're talking about splitting money, um, with the PTSA is to create a new logo. Um, so it has like, it's like the Willink, I think Willink Thomas Owl. Um, so that's something that they're, that they're talking about doing. Um, and then everybody did mention everything else. Um, everybody talked about, but how positive the year has been though. And even though, so we saw some struggles with busing, especially in those, you know, the beginning, which is what you'd expect. Um, but despite, despite that, all of the teachers, like everyone has really talked about what a great start to the year it is and how it really starts to feel. This year feels the most normal that it's felt in years. So I think that that's really, really good. And you can see that when we visited the schools and saw smiles on students' faces and saw them interacting. So I'm really hoping that this year is gonna be the year, especially with all this focus on really bringing people together that will start to see, you know, behavioral, once, you know, behavioral issues that we had last year from kids not socializing for a few years start to go down, so.
Eye contact and the greeting that we heard earlier, yes.
Yes, that's even helpful for adults. I mean, how often do we just whip by each other, you know? Um, next meeting for Thomas is November fifteenth at six-thirty PM and it's virtual.
Thank you.
I attended the Willink meeting that lasted two hours. Um, yeah, uh, and that was my, yeah, I know, I know. And I came from a soccer game to there. So I, I just observed pretty much. I, I gave a little bit of a report. They were in a transition phase with their officers and that's why it took so much time.
They're always looking for more help.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what I'm doing to tell you the truth. I'm just there to figure it out.
You did great at Thomas.
Carol, you lasted the two hours. I'm sure you were very supportive.
You did great at Thomas. I thought I would talk for her so that, because this is her first meeting ever and she's just.
She took the reins.
Yeah, she, you did great.
And I did it from a soccer field.
Yeah. You did it with a soccer field in the background.
Our grandson's game was going on and I was gonna leave and our granddaughter said, "Is it a Zoom meeting? You can do it here." And she helped set me up.
That's awesome.
Kids are fantastic with that, even when we've been doing.
So it's so cool that we can combine.
And kids can help. I was helping a little elementary child with her, with her nails during a meeting. And she was like, "You need to speak up so they can hear you." Because I'm like trying, you know, and I was like, kids, they are, they've, they've adapted very well.
I taught parents at Union Square at the, at the council meeting.
Anybody else? Good?
Last thing I just wanna say is PTSA membership is in full swing. So everybody should be getting their PTSA membership. Um, and so far it's been fantastic. It was a huge drop before COVID. We had hit this excellent fifteen-hundred members, which was amazing. And then it dropped down, COVID just took it and really punched it right in the face.
Awesome.
So now we're seeing this amazing comeback, you know, for this early, this early on in our, in memberships. PTSA moms, that's hilarious.
Oh my God, that's awesome. All right, legislative, moving on to Monroe County School Boards, Jen. Sorry, you're laughing.
Um, so it's just, it was continuation really of what we talked about the first meeting. Just re, looking again at the priorities. Um, foundation aid formula, looking at teacher shortages and how to kind of expedite the process for people, especially between states. Um, creating the idea of universal UPK for all districts, fully funded. Um, some are looking at busing possibilities. I forgot about bus drivers. Um, definitely look at the electric bus issue, how detrimental it could be to budgets in schools and how unrealistic it may be for some districts. And then just really looking at how to adjust the tax cap in a way that makes sense for everyone involved. So those are the top priorities. Um, and then we're really just looking at what the stance of the, of Monroe County is and what that looks like for all the school districts.
Okay.
Generally, are they talking about, are they talking about, um, fully funded?
Lunch?
Oh, that's, that's like the next one. I just wrote like the top five.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was definitely on there.
A lot of districts, districts are saying they wish they could bring it back.
Yeah.
Because families really are finding it harder to kind of come up with that money that they weren't expected to have before.
And even some families that have, you never know what students are coming to school with. And if they don't have, if they should always be able to get, you know, it would be nice for them to never have to worry about going down to the cafeteria to get those things, so I just wanted to.
It was nice not having to worry about my kids' accounts going negative the rest of two years.
For sure.
But yeah, so those are the big issues across Monroe County and then, um, really just filling the gaps in, in, uh, in staffing.
Labor relations.
So the meeting was, um, pandemic supply chain considerations. And it's just the impact, um, the supply chain, um, issues. And the next meeting is in two weeks, so I'll be there.
Okay. Information exchange?
I can do that one. So, um, I think there was a few of us there, maybe Carol and Brian. So if I don't get this right. Um, so the information exchange was interesting. I, it's some of what we're doing in Webster, but it's talking about mental health and following. It's almost like the NMT, the pyramid level. And looking at, um, looking at kids and what they need to feel connected to their schools. So, um, you know, the more a student is connected to their school, the less they engage in risky behaviors. Um, kids who are not feeling connected and not feeling belonging are, are more at risk for those behaviors. So it's about this idea of relationship mapping. Um, how to identify where students connect to school? Does each student have a trusted adult? Do they have programs that they're connected to in school, like the tech program? It's asking each student, uh, who they consider their trusted adult is in the district. And if they don't have one, how do we reach out and make a more concerted effort to connect with each student? The more they connect, grades go up, attendance goes up and outcomes improve. Um, so Pittsburgh, they use index cards or a Google survey and they hand them out to each student and they ask them to put their trusted adult on that index card. And then they put those index cards in the student's mailbox or the teacher's mailbox. So the teacher knows who considers them a trusted adult. And if they have students that aren't filling them out at all, then those are students that they want to be able to reach out to and make sure, somebody to actually make the concerted effort to create that relationship with them. Um, so this was, the information exchange was a lot of also bringing, I, you know, everyone together to discuss scenarios, um, and how you can help connect students, um, back in a different, different mechanisms to do that. Did I miss anything?
Sounds good.
Okay. And I think we are doing some of that with a trusted adult. I know we have those signs, like especially up in the high school, you know, "I am a trusted adult." Do we reach, I don't know if we're reaching out to every student though. Is that something that we're doing at this point?
Some buildings.
Some buildings.
And we also have the sources of strength.
Oh, sources of strength is what you're.
Yeah. So they were definitely good ideas because we've talked about this, that not all kids show, show that they need help or that they are looking for that connection. And so it's good to reach out and make sure that, as a way for us to reach out and make sure that they have someone in some way to feel connected.
Awesome. Executive, we met last Wednesday. Um, big push for Act for Education, which I can push out to all the board members, just promoting that. Um, while all the good things that they're doing on a monthly basis. And honestly, there wasn't a lot on the agenda, but it was really just nice to catch up with the other superintendents and board presidents from Monroe County. We actually were able to kind of tout the Max Dossel thing pretty good. Um, and selfishly, Grease is gonna look into it now, so, you know. It, it, it's those connections and building those relationships and seeing everyone that we hadn't seen in a while, um, that's pretty much the majority, right? It was.
It was an opening and opportunity to really connect.
It was.
Yeah.
All right. And then district committees, audit.
Brian said it all wonderfully.
I, I agree, so check.
Being on audit committee is fantastic because Brian does the updates, so that was good.
Um, policy, we're meeting later this week, but then today we found out that we aren't able to do it piece by piece. We actually have to do it as an entire book. So, um, this is a little bit of a blow, but we will figure it out. Um, but basically we hired everyone, both these, like we've said in the past. Their lawyers and legal team have gone through it all with us. We have our first draft. So we'll just have to work on finishing the entire first draft before we kick it back to them and then, um, bring it forward.
Oh, so you have to have all of your.
We can't do it section by section? Yeah.
Can we do it by, we're gonna do it section by section? And then present the whole thing?
Once we get the second draft, then we'll look at it and then we'll be able to approve it. And we have to figure out how that approval process works.
Yeah, we're still kind of, it was a little bit of a blow today, so, um, more to come. More to come on that, I guess. But we are meeting later this week.
Just the subcommittee, just the board, because we're gonna work on our pieces. So right now for the first draft, we're just working different departments. Brian Freeman went last, the last meeting and went through most of the business office. We will do ours.
It's Thursday.
And, yep. And then, um, and then Dave will do his at a later date. And then we'll have the whole thing so we can hopefully submit the first draft with all the revisions to get the second draft, so. A little slow, but we'll get there.
Yes. And then strategic planning?
Strategy.
Strategy.
Yeah, I, I will cover that. So first we welcome Shanna to the team. Um, then we spent a fair amount of time talking about the efforts around DEI and inclusivity. Um, and the good news is our new director is putting together a strategic roadmap for that to address three particular areas. One is building individual and community capacity to respect the dignity of all people across their differences. Uh, second is engaging all stakeholders and promoting the success of all students. And third is providing more equitable access to opportunities for all students, particularly those from marginalized communities. So there will be an annual roadmap that the board will have a chance to review and ensure that is consistent with the direction that we have for this school district. So really, that was really impressive. Uh, happy to have a person of his skill, um, leading that initiative for us. And then just real quick, we're also going to do, plan to check act. So we're going to meet with some schools and the freshmen there and see how well Webster prepared them for their freshman year in college. Uh, and second, we're also going to, uh, try and reach out to some manufacturing companies, machine shops, uh, to see how people who choose not to go to college, but also have a career path for skilled trades, how they're doing and how Webster prepared them for that. Um, so.
That's great.
And then bring those learnings back. And then give it to Brian to implement with his team.
The whole team, yeah, absolutely.
When?
So just really quick, Redwood, Red Ribbon Week is, um, October twenty-third to the thirty-first. Their website has a plethora of activities, conversation starters, books and activities for families and school, the school district. The focus is mainly on health, living a healthy lifestyle. There is a drug takeback on October twenty-ninth from ten AM to two PM at the Holt Road Winters only. Um, the trucks will be there. Um, and then there's also an naloxone training, which is free to the public on eleven fourteen. So their next meeting is tomorrow as well.
Uh, nothing new for Fire. I know that they're looking at some leadership changes due to engagements and things like that, so. And I know that our new DEI director's gonna be working a lot more closely with them anyway. So that may be changing how that's being shared.
Sure, okay. Awesome. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review all the items. So can I have a motion to, uh, approve? Superintendent recommends approval of all items of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved, Mike? Second, Charlie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes seven, nothing. This is the part I gotta skip all these pages. And it brings us to visitor speaking time, correct? Great, all right. Again, I'm not gonna read the long rules and procedures. We know how it goes. We're happy to have Mr. Ruiz here, right?
Yes.
As our speaker?
Yes.
Go for it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm here to.
I'm pulling a few words.
Good evening. Uh, so I'm here to speak about the, the, the capital project. Uh, it's a wonderful thing as I heard everything being talked about, what was gonna be done. But I'm wondering, you know, some of it, at least millions, why wasn't it done before? If there's reviews all the time, what was it with other, other administrations or other boards where it wasn't done? And then why is this one done kind of so, is it this large ever? That, that seems like a lot of money and there wasn't one adjustment. Not one board member made any, well, you know, how about, can we wait on that? Can we not? You know, so I'm not sure, uh, why now? Um, and why wasn't it done before? So, because it's up to the board to, to really scrutinize it and to encourage it too. You know, it's a tough job that you have. But, uh, at any rate, just a question. I don't know if, I, I can't, I'm kind of shocked at the amount. I've never seen that so much all at once at this time, especially at this time. Why didn't we do this during the Trump years when the economy was good, pre-COVID? So just, uh, but at any rate, one of the biggest things I want to ask about is notifications. Uh, you had a student liaison, uh, here and I met the parents on the way out and they go, "What are you doing here, Dave?" "Well, I'm speaking about the budget of the capital project." They had no idea about it, no idea. I says, "Well, it's in the website and, uh, and it's been, it talked about three, four meetings." But again, these are parents, pretty good parents, if their kids are, you know, kids are liaisons here. So they had no idea. So the, here's, here's what I'm, uh, is it possible to send out a flyer to every taxpayer announcing the, the, what's going on here? You can also, it could be very simple, but then you direct them to the website. You know, because most people aren't gonna know about it. The newspaper is very low, that you legally are gonna use, very few people look at that. So I'm one, that's the big thing. Can you, can you, and let the public know about this in the mail to every household? And not, and we're already two months into it. It used to be communities would get a, a, a community group together and they, they toured the buildings, they'd discuss. Not much would change, but at least there was involvement and, and a lot of eyes on everything and some sharp pencils. So, uh, I don't see, I don't know if that's happening here. I don't know if you're gonna lie, see there, there's a schedule for looking, going to each building? Is the public invited to that, you know, to actually see what's gonna be happening? Uh, so that's, that's a biggie. And the other thing that some people have been telling me is the, you know, the expense. You just mentioned that, uh, some people can't even afford the school lunches. And it sounds like a small amount, one percent, but that's on top of all the other one percents And it sounds like a small amount, 1%, but that's on top of all the other 1% you've had four years ago and eight years ago, and all the bonds that you're now paying and continue, you know, they're always gonna happen. And four years, you're gonna have another bond. So, so that's the other thing. Why now at this time when things are about, are hitting the fan, economically speaking? You know, why so much? Why aren't we doing just the 60 million that we knew about, about five years ago, or 2018, I believe? So I don't know. So another question I have, it seems like such a large amount. I understand that if it's 10% of your assessed valuation of all your properties, you have to have even a different kind of a turnout at the election. So I don't know if that's been considered, the 10% of, you know, if you're borrowing 10% of your assessed valuation. So that's one question I have. The other one is, I don't know what's going on with the teachers' contracts and the administration contracts that are up this year. Again, will that increase the budget? 3%? 4%? Especially in this time of inflation? Things are, how are we gonna judge that? You know, you can't just look at one item, and not, you gotta look at the whole picture. So that's the question, what's happening with the school teacher, the contracts coming up? And what, you know, the, the other thing is, will this affect, with the inflation and the CPI, is it gonna affect the tax cap, you know? Which could be 7% or 8% this year or next year. Are you considering that? So far, Webster's been very stable. I don't know about the fund balance and the reserves and all that. That might be a way out, but I, I don't know what you're thinking down, you know, as far as the taxes. Could, could we see taxes that are higher than the last five to 10 years, you know? So that's, have you considered that? The other one is, again, I don't know how many projects you got going now that we're still paying for. There was a page you had, Brian had up, and I didn't fully understand it. And yes, it shows that in a couple of years, it's gonna be going down. But in a couple of years, you could be needing, needing more funding, you know? So the other one is, it says state aid is pay 75% of it. Great. You know, I hate when people say that, like, it's, it's free money. No, it's not. You, there's 700 districts in New York State, and they're all doing the same thing. Either last year or coming up, and that's a lot of money, and it just goes into the piggy bank. It just takes away from what the state has with your state aid. You know, I guess that fluctuates every year. It used to. That was a big deal. How much state aid, how much money does the state have to give us this, in the next coming few years? And from what I understand, they've, they've squandered, spent a lot because of the COVID money, and that's gone. And now they could be hurting in the next couple of years. So, you know, we're paying that through the state taxes and through our, so many other ways. Just one more increase for New York State. So again, some of the expenditures are okay, but just, I'm baffled that you're getting exactly every penny that they ask for in this time, you know, when we're having this financial trouble. So again, just to back up, have you considered the state aid status? What is gonna be in the next year, in the next couple of years? So again, blessings on your endeavor in this. It's tough. And maybe everything will work out fine, but I'm asking for, you know, I'd like to see a tighter, tighter pencils. And no matter what is done, a good, you know, everybody's looking for a good bang for their buck, that it's done in a very efficient manner. And again, one thing's 50 million, 60, that's tough to handle. But this, 100, it just might be not as efficient and a little tougher to manage. For instance, if I were to ask you, how much, where did our 14 million in COVID money go? I know there's, you've explained some of it, teachers, counselors, nurses, the administrator, the equity administrator, and some summer school, things like that, but I, I, you know, is that 7 million? Is that, is that the 14 million? You know, so if, if, if I, if you can't handle, give a good answer to the 14, how are we gonna answer to the 115 million? I'm, I'm sure you can. It's a little different. You can see what's gonna be done. But I don't know if you're gonna see a line-by-line item on, on the 115 million. I don't know if that'll be made to the public, but just an idea. So again, thank you for letting me speak, and.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Thank you. I would encourage you to check out the May 10th presentation, because I think if you look at that, you will see some of the things that we adjusted and took out, if that helps. But we can also meet offline as well.
I was gonna say, everything I said about that, it's obviously, I'm limited here. I've seen some, so I'm not sure. Okay.
Yep. And then honestly, reach out. We can ask, answer more of your questions. But I, I would start there, because I think you'll see where we started and then where we went down to.
I did look at his online tonight. There was some pretty good explanation of what he put on, so.
Thank you.
But again, my big thing is public. Send it out.
We are. We are.
Is it every resident, does it go to every resident?
Has to.
Okay. So it does go to, so they will send out information to every resident?
You know, when, that's, well, just to get some info. One thing is about the vote, when it's already said and done, even though it kind of is.
And then, Dave, are you looking, do you want us, do you want a response on the questions that you asked?
We can meet offline.
In your, okay.
I mean, yeah, that would be nice.
Right? Okay.
We can meet offline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, couple quick things. Next week's worship is canceled due to unforeseen circumstances. So our next meeting is November 8th, where this week we focused on social studies. We'll have a science focus on that one. I don't think I have any other updates, so.
It's something for everybody.
That's it, right? Okay. So can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the regular business meeting? So move, Carol. Second. Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, nothing. Meeting adjourned.